Hey, before we begin, if you like the stuff I make, please like, comment, and subscribe. It always helps to know that there are people out there finding my stuff entertaining in any regard, and it helps the algorithm recognize the work I do here. Beyond that, follow me on Twitter for manual updates for each week's release. If you're feeling extra generous, I have a Patreon where you can support the 92 Days Project and the channel as a whole for as little as $1 a month. If you'd like to pick up some high-quality merchandise, head on over to CNP-Productions.com/store to pick yourself up a shirt, hat, or sticker. I release a new shirt and sticker each week with the corresponding video. The shirts come in sizes from extra-small to 2XL in black, gray, navy, and red, while the stickers come in 3, 4, and 5.5-inch sizes. Personally, I suggest the navy blue, but that's my own taste. On another note, I've got a list of video ideas I want to flesh out, but if you have suggestions, I would be more than happy to take them into consideration. Go ahead and tweet them at me or leave a comment below with the hashtags #92daysuggestion or #cnpsuggestion so they're easier for me to find. I'm a solo operator here, so any ideas or suggestions at this point are pretty helpful. Alright, with all of that out of the way, let's get to it.
So, this week... We went to the beautiful Brown v. Board of Education historical site here in Topeka, Kansas. As you'll see, ton of the footage that I took in there is just line after line after line of just this beautifully rich history of not just the court case of Brown vs. Board of Education, which is one of the, if not the, most important court case in terms of rights as a whole, but the fight to bring it to that point, as well as how it influenced future court fights and future legislative action in the United States. It was a great trip, I'm so glad that I came up here. I think anyone who has the opportunity to come here should certainly come here. There's many lifetimes worth of experience within those walls. And it's just a beautifully historically rich place to visit for anyone.
On January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln would issue the Emancipation Proclamation as the first officially recorded executive order in US history. It stated, in short, that slavery was to be treated as federally illegal in all states in the Union except those which had seceded. Upon the Union reabsorbing a seceded state or territory, this order, along with all Union laws, were to be recognized and adhered to completely. All slaves were to be emancipated immediately and without recourse. All able-bodied former male slaves were to be drafted to the ranks of the Union Army or Navy much like their white counterparts, and given full military training, compensation, rank, and assignment. On November 19th, 1863, he would get off a train in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, only four months and 16 days after the end of the Battle of Gettysburg, to deliver one of the most important, reverent, humble, and fervent speeches ever delivered. A speech which he worried about his entire trip there, even rewriting it until moments before he left the train to deliver it. Two years later, on January 31st, merely 11 days after his second inauguration, the 13th Amendment would be passed in Congress, ruling that slavery and involuntary servitude of any sort would be seen as illegal throughout all of the United States. In 1868, during post-war reconstruction, the 14th Amendment would be ratified requiring that anyone born in the United States, regardless of race or class, be given citizenship. No state could make or enforce any law to "abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of laws." 1868 would bring us the 15th Amendment wherein it was made illegal to deny any citizen, regardless of race, color, creed, or "previous condition of servitude," the right to vote. It also made literacy tests to judge the fitness of one's capability to vote illegal. These were the seeds of freedom and equality for people long tossed aside and forgotten. Seeds, however, need to be watered to grow, and this harvest was not without its droughts. In 1890, the state legislature of Louisiana passed the Separate Car Act, requiring separate accommodations for whites and blacks on railroads, even including separate railway cars. In response, a concerned group consisting of Black and various ethnically Creole people would form the Committee of Citizens, a group dedicated to the repealing of the law and to fight its effects. Now, here's where it gets really crazy, alright? So, the COC would persuade a man named Homer Plessy, a man who was born a free man and was only 1/8 Black, but under Louisiana law would still be considered a Black man, to participate in their protests. The COC convinced him to purchase a ticket to ride a first-class "whites-only" car from the East Louisiana Railroad Company to ride from New Orleans to Covington, Louisiana. Now, the ELRC had already opposed the Separate Car Act on the grounds that it would require the expensive purchasing of extra cars. However, they would accommodate the act with segregated cars nonetheless. The company and the staff of the specific train were informed of Mr. Plessy's lineage and his intent to change the law. Separately, the COC also hired a private detective who had arrest rights to ride the same train and detain Plessy, so he would be arrested on the grounds of disobedience to the Separate Car Act, not on some lesser charges of vagrancy or what have you. And just as planned, Plessy took his purchased seat in the whites-only car, was almost immediately arrested by the detective, and was taken off the train at Press &amp; Royal Street, where he would be remanded for trial in Orleans Parish. So, in his case, officially titled "Homer Adolf Plessy vs. the State of Louisiana", Mr. Plessy's lawyers would argue that the Separate Car Act denied Mr. Plessy of his 13th and 14th Amendment rights, which required equal treatment under the law. Regardless, Judge Howard Ferguson would rule that Louisiana had the right to regulate railroad companies that operated within state boundaries as the state so pleases. Plessy was convicted and required to pay a $25 fine, but Mr. Plessy would immediately seek a writ of prohibition. The COC would take Mr. Plessy's case to the State Supreme Court of Louisiana, where they again found an unreceptive ear with the state upholding Judge Ferguson's ruling. Now, the State Supreme Court Justice Charles Erasmus Fenner would cite the Massachusetts Supreme Court's pre-14th Amendment ruling that segregated schools were constitutional and therefore segregation was legal. In response to the accusations of segregation based on racial prejudice, Massachusetts would state, "This prejudice, if it exists, is not created by law and probably cannot be changed by law." The law would be overturned five years later, but the precedent would remain. Fenner would also refer to Pennsylvania's Supreme Court, which stated, "To assert separateness is not to declare inferiority, it is simply to say that following the Order of Divine Providence, human authority ought not to compel these widely separated races to intermix." Still, the COC would take Plessy's appeal against Judge Ferguson to the United States Supreme Court in 1896. There'd be two legal briefings prepared and submitted on Mr. Plessy's behalf: one by Albion W. Turgi and James C. Walker, and the other by Samuel F. Phillips and F. D. McKinney. Turgi and Walker would argue the court violated the 13th and 14th Amendment rights of Mr. Plessy, arguing that the reputation of being a Black man was that of property, which implies inferiority in comparison to whites. A decision would be found in favor of Judge Ferguson on May 18th, 1896, in a 7 to 1 decision against Plessy that upheld the constitutionality of Louisiana's train-car segregation laws. It should be noted the Ninth Supreme Court Justice was unavailable at the time due to his daughter's untimely death. This case, from local to national court, would be recognized and referenced for decades to come as the legal protection of Jim Crow laws across the nation. The drought continues. Now, while the COC would fail in their mission, the spirit would live on. Even with the widespread appeal of Jim Crow laws, only 17 states required segregation as law, while oppositely, 17 strictly prohibited such laws from being drafted and signed. Other than that, 10 states had no particular leanings but also no laws regarding segregation, and a further four had limited forms ratified. Starting in the 1930s, Howard University and the NAACP would join together and pursue legal strategy to undermine the country's public education segregation by first focusing on the burgeoning graduate schools, which we have discussed previously. With these attempts came success in the cases of Mendez v. Westminster, as well as Sweat v. Painter, and McLaurin v. Oklahoma State Regents, suggesting racial segregation was, at least situationally, inherently unequal. Now, Menendez v. Westminster, full name Menendez et al. v. Westminster School District of Orange County et al., would challenge the Mexican remedial schools in Orange County, California in 1946. In its ruling, the Ninth Circuit Court of California held that forced segregation of Mexican-American students into what they termed "Mexican schools" was an unconstitutional act and therefore unlawful. Now, this was not because Mexicans were white, but rather, as ruled by Judge Paul McCormick for the US District Court, "The equal protection of the laws pertaining to the public school system in California is not provided by furnishing in separate schools the same technical facilities, textbooks, and courses of instruction to children of Mexican ancestry that are available to other public school children regardless of their ancestry. A paramount requisite in the American system of public education is social equality. It must be open to all children by a unified school association regardless of lineage." The evidence clearly shows that Spanish-speaking children are mentally deficient in learning English by their lack of exposure to its use because of segregation, and that co-mingling of the entire student body instills and develops a common cultural attitude among the schoolchildren, which is imperative for the perpetuation of American institutions and ideas. Now, for the Herman Marion Sweat versus Theophilus Schickle Painter, or better known as Sweat v. Painter, they would argue in 1950 similarly that segregation, as applied to the admissions processes of law schools in the United States, violates the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment because separate facilities in legal education are inherently unequal. Now, the Travis County District Court would continue the case for six months rather than give the plaintiff a "rite of mandamus," which in short is a tool used to force a defendant to perform a specific action. Now, this was all done in order to give Texas the time to create a law school specifically for Black students as a way to make the case null and void. The Texas Supreme Court would affirm the district court's decision and denied further appeal on the case of Sweat v. Painter, but the NAACP would take the case national. The US Supreme Court would reverse the state district court decisions, stating that separate schools failed qualification due to both quantitative differences in facilities and experiential factors. Simply put, the Supreme Court said the schools couldn't provide enough experiences or a high enough quality of education to their students and was therefore not an equal school. The court held that when considering graduate education, experience must be considered as part of substantive equality. Now, settled on the same day as Sweat v. Painter, McLaurin v. the Oklahoma State Regents argued that the different treatment of students in public institutions of higher learning solely on the basis of race violates the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. The plaintiff, George W. McLaurin, who already had a master's degree in education, was first denied admission to the University of Oklahoma to pursue a doctorate in education and would successfully sue in the Western District of Oklahoma US District Court to gain admission to the school. At the time, Oklahoma state law prohibited the education of blacks and whites in the same facilities. The court found that since the university would not provide separate facilities, they were in violation of McLaurin's constitutional rights. The university admitted McLaurin but provided him separate facilities, including a special table at the cafeteria, a separate desk in the library, a separate class desk just outside the doorway, and even made him eat at different times than other students. McLaurin returned to the district court and petitioned to force the university to remove the separate facilities and allow him to fully interact with other students. The court would deny his request, and Mr. McLaurin would then appeal to the US Supreme Court. On June 5th of 1950, the US Supreme Court ruled that a public institution of higher learning could not provide different treatment for a student solely because of his or her race, as doing so deprives the student of his or her 14th Amendment rights to equal protection. Accordingly, the High Court reversed the decision of the US District Court requiring the University of Oklahoma to remove the restrictions under which McLaurin was attending the institution. This case, together with Sweat v. Painter, which was decided the same day, marked the end of the separate but equal doctrine of Plessy v. Ferguson in graduate and professional education. In my attempts to better understand this case, I found that I lived not too far away from where the court case was fought, so I got in the car and drove about an hour away to Topeka, Kansas to experience the museum firsthand. The staff were kind enough to let me film inside the whole of the museum, so I was able to pull together just over 32 minutes of B-roll. Thanks again to Brown v. Board of Education National Park in Topeka for this opportunity. In 1951, a class-action lawsuit was filed against the Board of Education of the city of Topeka, Kansas, in the district court. The plaintiffs were 13 Topeka parents on behalf of their 20 children, and the suit called for the district to reverse its policy of racial segregation. The Topeka Board of Education offered separate elementary schools due to Kansas law allowing, but optionally, for districts to operate segregated schools. These plaintiffs had been recruited by the Topeka chapter of the NAACP for their overarching goals of making segregation illegal. The named Black plaintiff, Oliver Brown, was a parent, a welder, and an assistant pastor at his local church. He was convinced to join the lawsuit by a childhood friend and local NAACP chapter leader, Charles Scott. Brown's daughter, Linda Carol Brown, a third grader, had to walk six blocks to get to her school bus to ride to Monroe Elementary, a segregated Black school one mile away, while Summer Elementary, a white school, was seven blocks from her house. As directed by the NAACP leadership, the parents each attempted to enroll their children in the closest neighborhood school in the fall of 1951. They were each refused enrollment and redirected to the segregated schools. The naming of the case, which is officially Oliver Brown et al. v. the Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas, was a strategic choice to have a man at the head of the roster. The NAACP lawyers believed it would be more likely to be picked up by the Supreme Court if necessary in that case. The 13 plaintiffs as a whole were Oliver Brown, Darlene Brown, Lena Carper, Sadie Emanuel, Marguerette Emerson, Shirley Fleming, Zelma Henderson, Shirley Hodinson, Maude Lawton, Alma Lewis, Iona Richardson, Vivian Scales, and Lucinda Todd. The district court ruled in favor of the Board of Education, citing the US Supreme Court precedent set in Plessy v. Ferguson. A three-judge district court panel found that segregation in public education had a detrimental effect on Black children, but denied relief on the ground that the Black and white schools in Topeka were substantially equal with respect to buildings, transportation, curricula, and educational qualifications of teachers. The fight was not over, the storm clouds are forming. The case of Brown v. Board of Education, as heard before the Supreme Court, combined five separate cases: Brown itself alongside Briggs v. Elliott as filed in South Carolina, Davis v. County School Board of Prince Edward County as filed in Virginia, Gerhart v. Belton as filed in Delaware, and Bowling v. Sharp as filed in Washington, DC. All of these were NAACP-sponsored cases. The Davis case, the only case of the five originating from a student protest, began when 16-year-old Barbara Rose Johns organized and led a 450-student walkout of Moton High School. The Gebhardt case was the only one where a trial court, affirmed by the Delaware Supreme Court, found that discrimination was unlawful. In all other cases, the plaintiffs had lost as the original courts had found discrimination to be perfectly lawful. The Kansas case was unique among the group in that there was no contention of gross inferiority of the segregated school's physical plant, curriculum, or staff. The district court found substantial equality in all such factors. The lower court, in its opinion, noted that in Topeka, "The physical facilities, the curricula, courses of study, qualification, and quality of teachers, as well as other educational facilities in the two sets of schools were comparable." They found that "colored children," in many instances, "are required to travel much greater distances than would be required to travel if they attended the white school," but also noted that the school district "transports colored children to and from school free of charge," and that "no such service was provided to white children." In the Delaware case, the district court judge in Gebhardt ordered that the Black students be admitted to the white high school due to the substantial harm of segregation and the differences that made the separate schools unequal. Under the leadership of Walter Ruther, the United Auto Workers donated $75,000 to help pay for the NAACP's efforts at the Supreme Court. The NAACP's chief counsel, Thurgood Marshall, who was later appointed to the Supreme Court in 1967, argued the case before the Supreme Court for the plaintiffs. Assistant Attorney General Paul Wilson, later distinguished emeritus professor of law at KU (those damn Jayhawks), conducted the state's ambivalent defense in his first appellate argument. In December of 1952, the Justice Department filed a "friend of the court" brief for the case. The brief was unusual in its heavy emphasis on foreign policy considerations of the Truman administration, and the case ostensibly about domestic issues. Of the seven pages covering "the interests of the United States," five focused on the way school segregation hurt the United States in the Cold War competition for the friendship and allegiance of non-white peoples in countries then gaining independence from colonial rule. Attorney General James P. McGannery stated, "The existence of discrimination against minority groups in the United States has an adverse effect upon our relations with other countries. Racial discrimination furnishes grist for the communist propaganda mills." The same brief quoted a letter by Secretary of State Dean Akinson's lament, "The United States is under constant attack in the foreign press, over the foreign radio, and in such international bodies as the United Nations because of various practices of discrimination in this country." In spring of 1953, the Supreme Court heard the case but was entirely unable to decide the issue and asked to rehear in the fall of the same year, with special attention to whether the 14th Amendment's equal protection clause prohibited the operation of separate public schools for whites and blacks. The court reargued the case at the behest of Associate Justice Felix Frankfurter, who used reargument to allow the court to gather a consensus around a Brown opinion that would outlaw segregation. The justices, in support of desegregation, spent much effort convincing those who initially intended to dissent to join a unanimous opinion. Now, although the legal effects would be the same for a majority rather than unanimous decision, it was felt that a dissent could be used by segregationists as a legitimizing counterargument. Justices Douglas, Black, Burton, and Minton were predisposed to overturn Plessy. Fred M. Vinson noted that Congress had not adopted desegregation legislation yet, and Stanley F. Reed discussed incomplete cultural assimilation and states' rights, and was inclined to view that segregation worked to the benefit of the African-American community. Tom C. Clark wrote that "we had led the states to think segregation is okay and we should let them work it out." Now, Felix Frankfurter and Robert H. Jackson disapproved of segregation but were also opposed to judicial activism and expressed concerns about the proposed decision's enforceability. Chief Justice Vincent had been a key stumbling block. After Vincent died in September of '53, President Dwight D. Eisenhower appointed Earl Warren as chief justice. Warren had supported the integration of Mexican-American students in California school systems following the Mendez v. Westminster case. However, Eisenhower invited Earl Warren to the White House, where the president had allegedly told him, "These southern whites are not bad people. All they're concerned about is seeing their sweet little girls are not required to sit in school alongside some big Black bucks." Nevertheless, the Justice Department sided with the African-American plaintiffs.
Is this the way you feel in the morning? Still tired after a good night's sleep? Too dragged out and nervous to face the day? Too tired, too often? Try Ributol! If you too need extra amounts of thiamine and riboflavin, Ributol can help you gain new strength, new energy. Let just one person among thousands of users tell you about amazing benefits gained from Ributol. Mr. Daniel Spillane of New York City.
I was feeling tired. My wife heard about Ributol on the radio. After taking it, I feel full of pep.
Yes, folks, so confident are we that Ributol can help you if you are not getting enough thiamine and riboflavin that we offer you this guarantee. Take Ributol for just one week. You must feel stronger, peppier in seven days, more vital, more alive, or your money back. You have nothing to lose, everything to gain. Get Ributol from your druggist today.
Warren convened a meeting of the justices and presented to them a simple argument: that the only reason to sustain segregation was an honest belief in the inferiority of blacks. Warren further submitted that the court must overrule Plessy to maintain its legitimacy as an institution of liberty, and it must do so unanimously to avoid a massive Southern resistance. Now, although most justices were immediately convinced, Warren spent a lot of time after this famous speech convincing everyone else to sign on to the opinion. Warren drafted a basic opinion and kept circulating and revising it until he had an opinion endorsed by all the members of the court. Justice Reed was the last holdout and reportedly cried during the reading of this opinion. On May 17th of 1954, the Supreme Court issued a unanimous 9 to 0 decision in favor of the Brown family and the other plaintiffs. The decision consists of a single opinion written by Chief Justice Earl Warren, which all justices joined. The court's opinion began by noting that it had tried to determine whether the 14th Amendment was meant to abolish segregation in public education, even hearing a second round of oral arguments from the party's lawyers, specifically on the historical sources, but to no avail. In addition, the court said that the question was even more difficult because of the major social and governmental changes that had taken place in the late 19th and early 20th centuries. The court noted that the late 1860s, when the 14th Amendment was adopted, public schools were uncommon in the South. At the time, southern white children whose families could afford schooling usually attended private schools. While the education of Black children was "almost nonexistent," to the point that in some southern states, education of Black people had actually been forbidden by law, the court contrasted this with the situation in 1954, saying, "Education is perhaps the most important function of our local and state governments." It concluded that, in making its ruling, the court would have to "consider public education in light of its full development and its present place in American life throughout the nation." Now, during the segregation era, it was common for Black schools to have fewer resources and poorer facilities than white schools, despite the equality required by the so-called "separate but equal doctrine." However, the court did not address the issue of segregated educational facilities for Black children usually being inferior in quality to those for white children, probably because some of the school districts involved in the Brown lawsuit had made improvements to their Black schools to "equalize them with the quality of the white schools." This prevented the court from finding a violation of the equal protection clause in "measurable inequalities" between all white and Black schools, and instead required it to look to the effects of segregation itself. Thus, the Supreme Court framed the case around a more general question of whether the principle of separate but equal was unconstitutional when applied to public education. In answer, the court held that it did. It ruled that state-mandated segregation, even if implemented in schools of otherwise equal quality, was inherently unequal because of its psychological impact. The court supported this conclusion with citations to a number of psychological studies that purported to show that segregating Black children made them feel inferior and interfered with their learning. Now, these studies include those of Kenneth and Mamie Clark, whose experiments in the 1940s had suggested that Black children from segregated environments preferred white dolls over Black dolls. The court then concluded its relatively short opinion by declaring that segregated public education was inherently unequal and violated the equal protection clause and was therefore unconstitutional. In 1955, the Supreme Court considered arguments by the schools requesting relief concerning the task of desegregation. In their decision, which became known as Brown II, the court delegated the task of carrying out school desegregation to district courts with orders that desegregation occur "with all deliberate speed," which is which is a phrase traceable to Francis Thompson’s poem “The Hound of Heaven.” Now, white students in the country were given assistance to attend white-only private academies that were taught by teachers formerly employed by the public school system, while black students had no education at all unless they moved out of the country. But the public schools reopened after the Supreme Court overturned Brown II in Griffin v. County School Board of Prince Edward County, a name that doesn’t roll off the tongue nearly as easily, declaring that “the time for mere deliberate speed has run out,” and that the country must provide a public school system for the children regardless of race. These seeds begin to sprout. Alright, once again, thank you to Brown v. Board of Education National Park for allowing me to film the exhibits in your museum. It was an astonishing sight to behold, and I am eternally grateful for the opportunity. Brown v. Board of Education was definitely not the end of the civil rights movement, but the events surrounding it are some of the most underrated and forgotten in history classes today. Everyone talks about Rosa Parks, MLK, and the Civil Rights Act, but oftentimes, Brown is overlooked and mentioned only in its most basic description when talking about civil rights throughout American history. It’s because of storied histories like these that I wish there were separate classes for American history in high school that would each be two or more semesters. One would focus on America from its founding up to the 20th century, and the other focused entirely on the 20th century up to today. There are many generalizations made about our national history that would be immediately and factually refuted if there were time to focus and understand. History is, especially today, almost entirely weaponized in an attempt to demonize groups of people for their political beliefs or immutable characteristics like race and sex. History is supposed to be a tool to understand the world, not a weapon with which to subjugate it, and it is imperative that we as a nation can understand and correct those mistakes before we repeat them. Okay, on a different, yet probably less serious note, the research for this week was absolutely wild. Can we talk for a moment about the fact that Plessy v. Ferguson, and in a way, Brown v. Board of Education, can be traced back to what is essentially a court case that was entirely based on a staged event with the goal of getting a man arrested for a law that a group thought was unjust? If I hadn’t researched this myself, I’d have believed this was one of the wildest conspiracies out there, and to some degree, it is. Their plan is probably one of the greatest heist film plots of all time. Stuff like this makes legal thrillers like The Pelican Brief feel like a junior high school project. That kind of obscure detail and absurdist history is what I live to learn. Alright, I think that I got everything I wanted to say out in the open, and I hope you learned even just a little bit more about one of the most important, yet underappreciated, pieces of American history. Thank you all so much for watching this absolutely massive video. As I’m writing this outro, I’m currently on page fifteen, and that takes the cake for the longest script I’ve ever written. In fact, this script is almost as long as my senior project paper I wrote for a year-long class that basically amounted to me learning how to build an entire modular house from the ground up and the intricacies of the needs of the homeless populations of California. Maybe I’ll talk about that more someday, but today’s definitely not that day. If you enjoyed the video, make sure to like, comment, and subscribe. It lets me know there are others out there enjoying the work, and it helps to push me to continue. If you want to know when a new video goes live, make sure to click the bell icon and turn on notifications. And if that doesn’t work for you, follow me on Twitter, where I manually update you all on the new releases each and every week. If you want to support me further, I have a Patreon where you can support me for as little as $1 per month. And if you’d like to buy something to show your support, head on over to CNP-productions.com and get yourself a very well-made t-shirt, hat, or sticker. I add new designs each week to correspond with that week’s video, and the products are always out a few days before the video is completed. So, check in frequently to find something you may like. I personally recommend the navy blue variants of shirts, but that’s just my taste. Next week, for a much lighter tone of a video, we’re discussing what many have called “the worst marketing blunder in history.” I’ll see you all then. Sam Bat time, Sam Bat channel.